Good afternoon, we are calling the special meeting work session for Rogue Community Code for Tuesday, October 21st. We are going to start with the presence of a quorum and we do have four of us, so we are good to go. And we'll do introduction of guests and how about we start, let's start in that back corner.
We've got Dean of Instruction by Technology, Visual Arts, Design, and Public Media.
Yes.
You go on.
I've got lots of time. Acronyms. Oh no, I'm ready. You've got lots of time. Go clear through.
Isam, I'm an Executive Director, Institutional Effectiveness and Planning.
I'm Wallace Director of Marketing and Communications. Lisa Parks, Dean of Business and Workforce Development.
Kevin Parry, and you're Support Specialist too.
Richard Plot, Chief Information Officer.
Mike Pollak, I'm the new CFO.
Thank you.
Rusty Reese, Dean of Health and Public Safety.
Excellent, we're going to go here.
Stanton, Vice President of Operations and Finance.
Jamie Harrington, Vice President of People, Culture, and Safety.
Ben Kohler, Vice President of Student Learning and Success.
Juliette Long, Vice President of the Long Goodbyes.
I always, see I gave you plenty of time to come up with what you wanted your, your title to be today. So, welcome to our work session and we're going to start, I'm going to kick it off over Randy to start us off today.
Yeah, thanks, and I apologize for not being able to be with you today. I am out of town for a hurdy board meeting and ACCT's annual meeting. What we're going to talk about today, and I say we loosely, our, our leadership team got a presentation to put together for you that's consistent with some of the things that we talked about a little bit in the past and we talked about at the board retreat. Really focusing on a couple themes for the year. One of them is continuity, another is support, and then the third really came from, from feedback we received as part of our, our bond efforts last fall and that was the need to more effectively tell our story. So, our folks have been working really hard on figuring out what telling our story would look like. So, we have more consistency around it. You've seen some preliminary work along their efforts, but I think today our goal is to tell you a little bit wider how comprehensively we'll, we'll do that. And then, and then most importantly, to get feedback from you on how you think that works and how you think that the group can continue to support your role as board members. And with that, I will turn it over to Jamie and I think she's going to help facilitate today's workshop.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks, Dr. Weber. It's really strange to not have him in wherever you are. Yeah, so, over the past few years, we have made significant progress as an institution. It's been wonderful to be able to share updates with you via work sessions and board meetings around the work that we've done to strengthen our systems and clarify our shared purpose and our strategic priorities. And so today, we're going to bring those together hopefully in a more cohesive way to support you as your role advocating for RCC in the community around the simple but powerful idea of opportunity starts here, which is a line that you have heard us use primarily in reference to the Carnegie classification. But we're going to pull that as a through line as we talk today about our story. And I am honored to be facilitating this session with my esteemed colleagues, so you can see listed on the slide. So, Dave, Juliette, Lisa, Isam, and Kelly have all contributed to today's session. So, the purpose of today's workshop, as Dr. Weber introduced, is to support you and us in strengthening how we communicate RCC's identity and impact, not by adding specific talking points, but by creating a shared narrative. And so we focused on trying to make sure that this narrative is true to who we are. We've organized the story through four lenses that reflect the breadth of our work. So, through the lens of a student, through lens of community, accountability, and employees. These four lenses, through them, we can see how opportunity starts here for everyone who connects with RCC. And throughout this session, we'll bring examples and stories to bring this to life. And that includes everything from classroom innovations to sort of regional collaborations. Some of these you have heard through things like our board work session and some represents new work that we're excited to share with you. And then, as Randy said, we will close with inviting some feedback and reflections from the board and how we can best support you in carrying this narrative forward. So, these are our lenses and each of them offers a different view of that same sort of idea around opportunity. So, for students, opportunity begins the moment that they step onto our campus or visit our website and continues through the completion of their educational journey with us. For our community, that really is about opportunity growing through visibility partnerships and shared investment in our region's success. When we think about accountability, we think about opportunity being sustained through integrity. So, things like accreditation systems and evidence of excellence, along with things like compliance, like you might imagine. And then through the lens of employees, we think about opportunity being created by the people who make this college what it is. The faculty, staff, and leaders who innovate, care, and connect every day. And it's important to note that these lenses don't stand alone. They overlap and reinforce each other. Today, we'll talk about how they form RCC's identity where opportunity isn't a promise alone, it's also a practice.
Thanks, Jamie. So, we'll start with students and the first, the first lens that we're looking through this. And when we, when we think about the phrase "opportunity starts here," right, it starts with access, access to higher education. You, you all remember the At-A-Glance that was developed by Isam and team. And from that At-A-Glance, that's a tool to help share our story, right? And there's 9,700 students almost, right, that we're serving this year. And those students come from all sorts of different backgrounds. Down at the bottom of that At-A-Glance, there's high school students, right? There's non-credit students, there's apprenticeships, there's adult learners in GED, right? We have veterans that we serve, all sorts of different folks. And that's, we're creating access to our training and our educational programming. And we also have, of course, traditional college students, right? Those students who are coming to, to residency to kickstart their four-year degrees that transfer to other, or schools, four-year schools, so that they can do it for less cost, right? They can do it by staying in their, where they grow up, right? Because maybe they're placebound. So, those are things that enable access for all the learners that we're serving. And so when we think about all of the, the different wraparound supports that we provide, right, for all of these students across our programming, you can see that this opportunity, it doesn't just start here, but it scales. It scales here, it scales throughout, right? And so, I want to talk a little bit about just the model, the systems that we put in place, right, to help create those systems that scale that opportunity for everyone. When we look at our educational programming and our training, trainings, you see programs that are fully embedded within each other, right? They're stackable. You've heard of stackable. They're also latticeable, right? So, students, they're stackable and latticeable. So, students are able to start in one area and then hopefully leverage those credits onto the next piece or take a little bit of a, like within health professions, for example, maybe they go, they go all sorts of different ways, right? And that's important for our students because it gives them choice, gives them opportunity. And we're making sure that the training that they've already received counts towards the next thing. Same thing with credit for private. And so this is important for us. This is the framework that we've chosen as an institution to be able to support this, right? And so, we're really giving them multiple entry and exit points, as you all have heard before, along their path so that it, it helps support their individualized learning plan, right? They're able to step in and step out on their own time and need, whether they need to step out and go into a career and start earning dollars right then and there so that they could come back later. And so, it fits their unique circumstances. And that's really important when we're thinking about access and supporting their success. So, that career pathways model, what we call it, that's really important and it's focused really to help students persist and to be able to succeed. Another example of kind of initiative that we've undertaken over the past several years is implementing open education resources, right? So, one of the things about supporting student success is removing barriers. We know fiscal, financial is a barrier for a lot of students. So, the least expensive that we can create that path for students, the better they're going to be, the more likely they're going to be able to continue on and succeed. So, open education resources is essentially, as you all probably know, access to textbook material that is used and shared on, on an open source type of a platform, right? And so, low cost or free, generally free for students to be able to access. So, gone are those days where students are coming in and spending a hundred dollars, a hundred and fifty dollars for a textbook for every class, right? And so the more that we can scale that initiative, the better off we're going to be doing as a college. And you'll hear more about that probably at the next board meeting. So, we're continuing to scale that as an adoption. I would say that another great example that I can give you this year is our Save Our Students, right, our early alert at-risk system that we use to, to help students who are either experiencing some sort of difficulty with their class or otherwise. And so, in this latest iteration of our SOS system, it's really cool because we now have the ability to, advisors can get into the system, faculty can initiate those SOS tickets. And it can be accessed by advisors, counselors, faculty in real time and they can see all the comments. And this is something that we haven't had in the past. We haven't had this ability. And so this is really important for us because we can see at any point in time where we are with that specific individual. We also have the ability to prioritize these. So, is it a really high priority that we need to get to right away? Or is it something that might, and that's a, that's really important for us as an institution when we think about the process because we want to be able to make sure we can get to those highest priorities first with limited resources. So, that's really important. I, I think those are good examples of how we're continuously improving our systems and our processes, those wraparound supports that help students, right? And all those initiatives and that's really helping us support all of their individual successes and in turn, making sure that we're stabilizing the enrollments.
Thanks, Dave. So, on the operational side, we're really about removing barriers and making it easier for students to focus on learning. So, Dave was talking about OERs. We made sure that our bookstore that we contract with allows us to adopt those OERs and then allow students, if they so choose, to have them printed from them and bound, or they can access them on Blackboard as faculty put those out there. We're also working on and helped bring the ERP forward and so we help support with financial tools that we're bringing on and then just also making sure the ERP is working well for students. Another item that IT is doing that helps students get back in the class, students that stop out and need their password reset or how to get back in the system if they lose their password. So, that's where we're helping contribute to students and allowing them to focus on learning. The other thing we're, you know, kicking off as a project is modernizing our classrooms so that we have more modern classrooms. And we started with rooms such as this room so that we could practice on not our students, right? So, we didn't interrupt their environment. We interrupted ourselves. So, we did, did that. So, you know, as I said, it's a work in progress. We're constantly doing things to improve. We're going to keep finding ways to refine and then strengthen what we do. And then each just, each change gets us closer to creating infrastructure where student success isn't a goal, but it's actually designed into every process that we have.
So, shifting into the community lens, opportunity starts here really means connection. So, it's how the Rogue Valley experiences us both on and off our campuses. Our visibility, our credibility, these are things that we've talked a lot about over the past couple of years here, as well as the partnerships that invite community partners, students and their families to consider Rogue as they're thinking about what their next step might look like. And so with that, I'd like to invite Kelly to share a little bit more about how our marketing and communications team is working to strengthen connections.
Hello. So, over the past year, we've been refreshing RCC's visual identity to reflect who we are and who we're becoming. This work balances tradition and modern, modernity. I never even say that word. I try. It honors our history while signaling a forward-looking and inclusive innovative college. You'll see that in the updated graphic elements on this, on the next slide and going forward through the, throughout this next year. Typography, color palette, and textures all designed to feel fresh and authentic while symbolizing stability, strength, and discovery. This unified look helps strengthen consistent storytelling across every department, campus, and communication channel. It also builds internal pride, giving employees a visual and emotional connection to the college's identity. When staff and faculty see their materials align with RCC's look and feel and message, they see their own work as a bigger part of the story or as part of the bigger story. The website is really our digital front door. We are reimagining it from the ground up around people who use it, especially students and prospective students. That's really the focus of this new website redesign. The new site is being built for clarity, accessibility, and storytelling. We're designing it with intuitive navigation, improved search, and clear calls to action that make it easy for visitors to find what they need and quickly. Every element from visuals and photography to layout and tone will showcase the people and programs that bring RCC's mission to life. The design will be fully responsive and ADA compliant, ensuring an equitable experience across, across all devices. Once launched in June of 2026, which we are on track for, we'll use analytics to monitor engagement and make continuous improvements based on how users interact with the story. For social media, our social media strategy is another important way we're expanding RCC's reach and strengthening community connections. Over the past few months, we've seen steady growth in followers and in engagement across all of our major platforms, especially LinkedIn. What's driving that growth is authentic storytelling. I don't know if any of you have seen recently, if, how many people here are on any of our social media follow us on? So, I don't know if you've seen the latest dental screening post. It's really cute. And it was actually created by a student. So, we're doing a lot more partnering with people around campus and students and community partners to show what it really means to be an Osprey. Social media has also become a true two-way conversation with the public. It's where we collaborate partnerships like I just talked about, respond to questions, and build trust through consistent transparent engagement. Marketing and Communications Plan. So, all this work rolls up into a comprehensive marketing and communications plan that align, aligns with RCC's five strategic priorities. Stabilize enrollment, community partnerships, employee connectedness, student success, and systems thinking. Our core messages, our core messaging, excuse me, themes focus on accessibility, transformation, and belonging. Reinforcing that opportunity starts here for students and the community. We're tracking key performance indicators like website traffic, engagement, and campaign reach to measure impact and ensure continuous improvement. A big part of our role is acting as a connector, helping divisions and departments translate their goals into stories that resonate with our audiences. We're also developing an updated and expanded do-it-yourself toolkit for faculty and staff so that they can promote their programs and events confidently while staying on brand. It empowers everyone to participate in telling RCC's story consistently and effectively. PIO role, that's part of my role, is a trusted, trusted public voice. Finally, this position function ties all of this together by ensuring RCC's communications reflect transparency, accountability, and care. The PIO manages proactive storytelling and responsive communication during sensitive and high visibility moments. Whether it's media relations, community outreach, or crisis communication, the goal is to build public trust and ensure that our story is accurate and aligned with our mission for opportunity, learning, and service. Next slide, please. So, here are some visuals for you, gives a sense of what our refreshed presence looks like and how RCC is starting to show up this community. Here, you can really see how our brand and messaging are coming to life through the colors and imagery that make RCC feel familiar and forward-looking. So, each of these visuals tells part of our story, not through words alone, but through design and emotion. Starting with the website, notice how much cleaner and more inviting it looks. Lower left-hand corner. Navigation is simple and visuals are people-centered, like I mentioned before. This is about making it easy for everyone, from a high school student to a community partner, to find what they need and to see themselves reflected at RCC. Social media, right above that, the goal is for our audiences to feel a sense of connection that RCC is approachable, inclusive, and actively involved in our region. The highlight on there is our LinkedIn account continues to show the strongest traction of nearly 500 followers in the last three months. What we are putting out there is quality and resonating with people. That's what those numbers show. So, the la, the first, that first column is the followers total that we have. The second column is also the followers total that we have. And the engagement rate and the posts are, and the, the growth is, or not the growth, sorry. Those numbers in those first three columns, second, third row are, are current, the last three months. And then the totals on the very right in the blue column are the growth year, year over year. So, we're looking good in that area. The expanded color palette you'll see in the upper right-hand corner, it's seeing, it's a small detail, but it represents a big part of our story. These colors are what I was saying earlier. They reflect the diversity, energy, and creativity of RCC, honoring where we've been while embracing who we're becoming. The broader palette gives us more flexibility to tell authentic stories across audiences and platform. It allows our materials to feel warm, inclusive, and dynamic all at the same time, reflect the people who make up the college. So, when you see these colors across the website and social media and campus spaces, you'll recognize them as a visual expression of our message, "opportunity starts here." Lastly, the website redesign timeline is in the lower right-hand corner. And we're about a third, third of the way through. Like I said, we're on track. Each phase is focused on accessibility, user experience, and authentic storytelling. I think we've mentioned before, we had over 300 people participate in the surveys that we did prior in the discovery phase. And then recently, we had some students participating in the user experience to tell us how we're doing so far and incorporated that into the latest round. The result will be a site that's informative, yes, and also a true reflection of who RCC is and where we're going.
So, what Kelly described in the previous slide shows how RCC's story reaches the community through branding and communication. This next part is about how the story becomes real through the partnerships we create every day for the students in our region. So, the first one I'll talk about is industry and advisory committees. So, every one of our CTE programs is built in partnership with industry advisory committees. So, these include community members who work in fields related to the programs that we offer. These, these partners, they review curriculum with us. They help us identify emerging trends, so we know when to change and update programs. And they ensure that, sure that our students are learning the skills the employers actually need. So, we don't want to keep our programs just doing the same thing, always updating. This continuous feedback loop means that RCC programs stay relevant and responsive. Our graduates are job-ready for the workforce they'll enter. In many cases, advisory members also offer internships, equipment donations, or guest instruction, helping break, bridge the gap between classroom and career. We also do a lot of work around high school partnerships and I think I would need an entire work session to share all of those. But a couple of the highlights are dual-credit early college programs, in particular, where students can learn through college classes either with their high school instructor and earn credit or from our instructor in the early college program. These experiences give students confidence and momentum, sending these themselves as college students before they even graduate from high school. It also helps families save time and money and creates a smoother transition into higher education. We continue to strengthen those partnerships. We meet with them, our, our colleagues regularly. And we've invested in resources around high school partnerships to do a lot of work in our area. We also have regional collaborations. So, these partnerships extend beyond the campus and community. So, examples of this, like RCC faculty and staff serve on our regional workforce board, industry boards, sector strategy groups, foundations, chamber boards, and many other organizations, kind of the reverse of the advisory board. Sometimes they come to us and provide our input and other times we get to be out there. Those kinds of engagements, you know, helps ensure we have a seat at the table when the region plans for economic growth and workforce development. They can help us keep up to date on what's happening in the region. They also create opportunities for collaboration, helping ensure we can respond quickly to evolving needs and whatever fields may be changing or needing stuff from us. So, healthcare, advanced manufacturing, and other advanced fields. These power partnerships are powerful examples of how we live our mission beyond our walls. And Jamie's going to share how these tie to RCC values.
Absolutely. Thanks, Juliette. I think what you've done an excellent job of is describing what makes RCC special. And that's that we operate in the community with the community, right? Which is certainly something that makes it a rewarding place to work. From every one of the partnerships that you described, whether we're talking about those advisory committees or high school collaborations, big or small, those are what help us fulfill our mission to enhance the quality of life in the Rogue Valley through accessible exemplary education. These relationships do embody our core values, integrity, collaboration, and courage by keeping us open to feedback and focused on those continuous improvement efforts that are part of the fabric of the college. When we measure success at RCC, it isn't just about enrollment or completion. Although those are data points that we certainly pay attention to and bring to this group. It is also about our collective impact in the community. So, how our students and our programs, as well as our partnerships strengthen the fabric of the region. That's what "opportunity starts here" truly means in the community context, opportunity that is shared, sustained, and shaped together. We're getting close to the moment Roger's been waiting for.
I see.
Yes, yes. We're talking accountability. So, there we go. Opportunity starts here also means that we're accountable, right, to our students, to our community, and to the standards of excellence that we set for ourselves. The systems, the assessments, the accreditation behind the scenes are what make our story credible and our impact sustainable. Isam will get us grounded as he talks a little bit more about our recent Carnegie classification and some of our accreditation achievements.
Thank you, Jamie. Adam Chairman and the board, you know, for, for the last few months, we have talked about this designation, the Carnegie Designation of an Opportunity College. I'm looking at it and you, you all know this, 24 public institutions in the great state of Oregon, one of them got selected. That's pretty big, if you think about it. And on the surface, what that's looking at is our student body looks like our community. And it provides a value add. Students who come here or go out into the community, they have greater social mobility than the average person there. In fact, 25% more of median income than the rest of the population in these two counties. You live and breathe this community. You are there. You get to see it. I don't have to tell you this. Carnegie didn't have to tell you this. You already knew this, but it's good to know this, that there is what the president talked about in the circle dinner. There's a symbiotic relationship between this community and the college. This, the opportunity designation doesn't happen in a vacuum. It is dependent on integrity. And what you see here, and you heard my colleagues talk about it, that, that is the integrity we are talking about. Your constituents, our stakeholders, they trust us to be what they see. They trust us to be what we tell them we are, what we want to do, where we want to go. And you know, there was, trust is a, it's one of those strong qualities and yet it is very special, sometimes hard to define. The late Mark Hatfield, who some of you know about, one of his favorite quotes from Ronald Reagan was "trust, but verify." And yes, we, we trust you, you trust us. What about who is validating that trust? And that's where a lot of these things come in. Year after year, the Northwestern Commission on Colleges and Universities has accredited us, flying colors out. Certifying to the fact that we meet their standards, surpass them and continue on a process of improvement. Across our operations, enrollment and finances and systems. In addition to that, some of our specialized programs EMS, dental hygiene, uh. Dental assisting massage therapy, they are also accredited by their specialized bodies. Beyond that, what else do you see? In addition to that, you see that we have regular audits based on. Strong public accounting criteria. We pass them with flying colors as well. And then look around you. Almost all of the folks who are sitting here. They serve on boards of nonprofits, the volunteer. They're in the leadership and boards of their professional organizations. Again, a vote of competence in the trust in our integrity. And that's where the opportunity designation comes from. We are a destination of opportunity because we live that value of integrity. And. As you look at it, that now across the board. The, we show that our operations are based in integrity and people around us can trust us. So as in closing, I'll say this, that. You know, opportunity begins here because integrity lives here. For all of us and with your support, we'll continue to move forward with it. Thank you.
Thanks, Esam. So from an operational and finance perspective, again, our focus is on accurate. Systems and, and providing accurate information, transparent information. Making sure that we're in compliance as he some mentioned, making sure our audit and our budget processes in compliance. And then continually improving what we're providing and bringing forward. Um, and again, that concludes everything from our annual audits to safety reviews that we have. Facilities planning, um, to our budget process. So these systems give us structure, which we love in operations and finance and accountability. Needed to use the resources we have wisely, maintain our compliance and make data informed decisions.
From an academic perspective, we think of accountability through assessment and continuous improvement. We use the institutional program and course level assessments to ensure that students are learning, they're learning aligns with what we've identified. Through learning outcomes, um, some of that through general ed, some of that through those advisory committee and workforce outcomes. Those assessments are used to measure effectiveness and to support our continued growth. Every department from student learning and success to operations participates in annual assessment activities and five year comprehensive program reviews. These efforts reflect our institutional excellence and our shared commitment to using data and reflection to strengthen teaching, learning and services. In essence, the assessments help us live the plan, act, assess, improve cycle that defines our systems thinking framework.
This is you.
Thank you. Only next year. We'll be publishing the full studies that you see cited below, move for our completers. And the community engagement survey, but I wanted to share some of the highlights and, and there's a reason behind this. Uh, and again, going back to. Uh, going back to the president's remarks at the, at the circle dinner. You heard him say that there's a symbiotic relationship between this college and this community. In an economic sense, this is what it looks like. That our graduates. Find work and mobility and, and social uplift through our employers here. And our employers and nonprofits and businesses. And their staffing needs through a lot of our graduates. What that means is that on both sides of the economic table, so to speak, RCC is strongly represented. And it is a big part of the overall economic engine of this community, of the uplift of this community. We're talking about folks who, you know, live here, who play here, who work here, worship here. Uh, this is them. An integral part of what we do and the economic engine we provide. In the next year or so, we'll have a new economic impact study, hopefully. And one of the things you will see again is. To be an economic nerd, in some case I'm going to go a little way in that direction that. Every dollar that this college spends, whether it is on salaries, whether it is on equipment, on vendors. It circulates in this valley about twice. It's basically doubling the impact of it. And this is kind of a, this is a. A tip of the iceberg that shows that this is what we're doing. In addition to everything else, this. College continues to be an economic engine for the valley. And I was joking with Kelly a little bit ago that. To quote an author from Portland. Roseanne Perry writes. Writes children's books. I'm quoting her in this paraphrasing her that. In a lot of ways, this is the college which belongs to the valley. And the valley belongs to the college. This is the symbiotic relationship. Thank you.
Thanks, Esam. So transitioning into the final lens of our story. The employee lens, I just want to pause and remind us that. Opportunity starts here doesn't only apply to our students. It also applies to the incredible faculty, staff and leaders who work here. Every day, um, to support that vision for our students and for our region. I would say that part of what brings, what keeps me here after 12 years. Which I realize with certain individuals to my left and right, doesn't seem long at all. But is the culture, it's what we bring. Um, every day as we're working with one another and with, with students. It is inspiring to be around such innovative. Creative. Smart and committed professionals every day. And so focusing on the way that we treat each other, focusing on connection, some of these themes that you've heard. Um, either by way of, of formal, you know, college strategic priority with employee connectedness. Or by the work that we do with things like department strategic planning retreats. Where we are pouring over the data and coming up with our strategies, tactics. Um, and the KPIs that we're going to use to help us further the mission and vision of the college. These are all and a really important part of how we bring opportunity to life with and for our students. And so on the slide, I've got a couple of key initiatives. I want to make sure that I say out loud that. Um, these are just an example of the many, many ways in which this opportunity. Um, concept is in play when it comes to employees. So. We have things like the employee appreciation week to celebrate the incredible work of employees. From every role on every campus, we have. Um, supervisor series, which is really around skill building for those who lead and supervise others. Things like coaching and communication as well as the, the nuts and bolts to help them in their roles here at RCC. We have the welcome to Rogue onboarding series. I know we've featured that quite a bit in different kinds of. Um, formats here with the board and that's something that's ever changing, but really is about bringing people into the culture. Um, and connecting them with one another outside of maybe their department or role based structures. And each of these efforts is around helping people understand that. They are a part of a whole culture, right? And connecting them to that vision. We've also talked quite a bit about the great colleges to work for survey. And so I want to make sure I mention that as well. It has given us really valuable feedback. Um, on where we're thriving and where we need to keep growing. Um, that feedback directly informs our institutional action plan, which is another way that we are able to. Um, follow through on using employee voice to drive that continuous improvement effort when it comes to the workplace. Um, and this also aligns with our dedication to systems thinking. So we plan, we act, we assess and we improve. Um, not just when we're thinking about students, but also when we're thinking about how to make ourselves stronger as an organization. And one of the most powerful examples, um, of our culture in action. Is how our faculty and staff will work together often across. Divisions or departments. And I think Dave has a few great examples that I'm counting on him to share.
Great, thanks Jamie. Thanks for queuing that up for me. So yeah, it's a, it's great. I had the opportunity to get to see a lot of, um. Collaboration and connection amongst our faculty and staff, um, all the time. So that's. Uh, I'm very privileged for that, but, um. We're all working for that shared goal. And that's again, the student, student success, student outcomes. In addition to being just a, an organization that really, um. Invests in professional growth for all of our faculty, staff. We have a lot of examples where, um, we bring together folks and try to connect them and. And, um, I, I think a couple of those are the in-service activities that we do annually. Um, several of those that bring like faculty or staff together, right? And. Gives them the, the time and the space to connect with each other. Share ideas, um, talk about innovations that maybe they've been working on. You know, whether that's across disciplines or across our organizational structures, right? And that's really important for us to, to create that time and space. And I think in a, a great example of us. Working and connecting with others externally, right? Collaboration wise is, um, our, our. Connection with the League for Innovation. And so this is important for us to recognize that. Um, RCC being a board college for the League for Innovation. Of those 19 board colleges. Really positions RCC as an exemplar. Of a role serving institution. To the 300, almost 300 institutional members in the league. So they look to, um, RCC on how we're doing things, right? And we get the opportunity to share what we're doing and the innovative things that we are doing. With all of those organizations, but we also get the opportunity to bring. Things, good ideas back, not only from the board schools, but just from other schools. So that's a really great. Uh, I, uh, example of an external collaboration. I think, um, we have some examples that are ongoing, like our, uh, simulation center of excellence that we'll be. Working towards, um, that's a great example of, um, connecting employees across disciplines. Whether we're using simulations that are interdisciplinary. Uh, so EMTs and paramedics working with nurses alongside in a simulation. So those are really good examples of it in an instructional, um, capacity. And so. I think, um, a great systemic approach that our college is doing. Is our micro grants, right? You see, this is a structure that we put in place and we allow. Faculty and staff to submit applications. Or innovative ideas. It's a way for us to pilot things and see how well they work, right? And here you're going to find faculty and staff collaborating together. Um, as well as other folks in operations to figure out ways and, and solve problems, right? Figure out different ways to do things that we might not have tried in the past. And that's a great example, I think of, um, employees being able to connect with each other for that shared purpose of. Um, you know, improving student success.
Thanks, Dave.
Yeah.
I think I would add that, um, although we may joke from time to time around. Midis, councils, task forces and teams. Say it together three times fast. Um, the reality is the efforts that are across the college, either position or role based or interest based. Um, really helps strengthen who we are. I'm really excited about the shared governance work that we've. Started and that we're going to continue to work on over the course of the year. Um, which will all foster that. Um, both the connection and meaning that we're talking about in this slide, but also that. Um, fabric of our story so that those things can be shared. With the community at large, um, in ways that are real and resonant with the actual experiences that people have on our campuses. Um, both from like a workplace perspective, but also from a student experience perspective. So it wouldn't be a work session without some fun photos. I love the one with the cotton candy.
It's my favorite. I took that. I sent it to you a couple of years ago.
I would like to work the cotton candy machine.
Hey.
Okay, VP of long goodbyes.
I'll put you down as volunteering. Let me get it out.
Very, very sticky, her head to knees.
Yes, she, she was covered. We can see it's on her nose in the picture.
She looks like she's having the most fun ever.
Yes.
That's all.
Yeah. So as we get close to wrapping up, um. We want to make sure that we bring it home with sort of the power of our story in, in the community. So. Each of the stories that we've told today are part of a larger picture. And each of the lens. Um, views students, community accountability and employees reflects that same sort of opportunity. Light that we've talked about. So opportunity for students to learn and thrive, an opportunity for our community to grow and connect. Opportunity for our systems to demonstrate the integrity. Um, and opportunity for our employees to find meaning and purpose. And so together they form the power of our collective story, the story of RCC. As a community of builders and leaders. Um, and learners advancing opportunity through that integrity and connection. Esam did an excellent job of reminding us how the Carnegie Opportunity College recognition affirms. That our local success has national resonance. Um, it's proof that our systems and values are not only aligned, but they're making a measurable difference in people's lives. And so to close this section, I've asked each of our vice presidents to share a short example or reflection that connects. Stories from their area to the whole. Uh, because we're united by shared promise and purpose. Dave, you're up.
Oh, great. Thank you. Thanks again, Jamie. So. I think what I wanted to share is, um, I, I, we talked a little bit briefly about it, but really what really connects us. Uh, and, and the work that we do is how we design those systems, right? How we design our educational. Trainings and, and that pathway for opportunity for everybody. And those pathways, they range from whether we're doing like a, a one hour training, non-credit, something like that. All the way to, um, full two-year degrees and essentially beyond. Few years, but, um, we currently offer like over a hundred stackable and latticable credentials, right? Um, that really help, uh, uh, they, we meet students where they are, right? And that's really important. And, and I, it helps them move forward. It also. Helps us ensure that the opportunity starts here, but it also scales here. As they need. Um, and so I think this is what we call our guided pathways approach and, and it, it, um. It includes faculty, staff, like guidance, uh, uh, counselors, um, advisors, career coaching, like all of the pieces. That are working together, right? To help support those students on their individualized journeys. And so that collaboration, that role, whether it's across. Our organizational structures, those things, right? Or whether it's across campuses. Um, that's important for us to make sure that we deliver.
And adding to that, um, to make sure we're responsive to students' needs in real time, we also have our special projects. Those include things like the Bachelor of Applied Science in Education. Um, expanding apprenticeship opportunities. Work-based learning, simulated learning environments. Uh, all these are projects that allow us to be able to be responsive to our community needs. And make sure that students have meaningful hands-on learning experience. Make sure we are not static and. Evolve as our community and our students do.
From an operations and finance perspective, um, we're connected to the larger story is through accountability and trust. We're making sure that the systems and resources, uh, work seamlessly to support instruction. And learning, um. So it's an ongoing process. It doesn't stop. It's continual. In our partnerships between operations and, and instruction, it's what makes the, the college function as one integrated. Integrated system of opportunity.
Yeah, I want to know that picture really fast. Go back.
Which one?
The blow up one.
That was, um, we had commencement for a number of years. And that is, um, a previous business office director, Lisa and I. It was one of the most fun times in my whole life. Was on really being silly.
That's all I'm saying.
Trying to sneak it in there. Although I look extra vertically challenged. It's a Katie. That's okay. So, um. This is your time to shine board. Um, so we. Have put a focus. So we have put a focus on ways in which we can support you as you advocate and share this greater message with the community, starting with the At a Glance. We're really excited about this. We also recognize that it's two pages filled with a lot of data. We have our first annual report to the community coming up in the spring, which I think will really help us tie these pieces, both the data and the student stories and other kinds of narratives together in a real cohesive way that should, should support you. And we also just want to pause here and ask, are there other ways in which we can better support you as board members as you're sharing this opportunity message there?
Start with, I like the use of the tagline of opportunity starts here for not just students, but like that through line is going to be really easy to connect things to as we're in the community. And just, I want to say thank you to all of you for sharing this part with us today especially, and I'll let my fellow board members talk, but every time we come to a work session or we come to a board meeting, I learn more and more and more and more, and I feel more and more confident in the ability to answer questions than I can and redirect the questions that I need to redirect to people who know it. So I'm, and Maria has her hand up. Okay. Maria, welcome.
Hi, everyone. Sorry for being late. I'm glad I caught this the tail end of this presentation. I wanted to share that I really did appreciate Isam's those four points about the return on investment. And what I loved about them is that they really, they're from the community's perspective about, you know, sort of the end impact of that we're training folks that are staying in this community, they're contributing to this community. I think that is incredibly important. Because the community doesn't speak higher education. So as, as much as possible of showing them how, how they benefit, I think is important. So thank you for that. That's, it's just a, a different frame of looking at that information. The other thing that I think would be really important for us to have is just like, you know, one or two minutes, really short, short format student stories that go along with those data points. I think that would be really important for the, just to get, get, get get the attention of folks that the data just, that, that doesn't align with them. So those are my two recommendations and kudos to all of you for this great work. Love where we're going.
And I see that you also have your hand up virtually.
You talk to me?
I am. On that screen that I can see.
Are you talking to me? That's, I guess. No, I want to, I want to echo Maria's comments about that. I found that one sheet that talked about how many students stayed here, what they got here, how liable and fine. That should be engraved and that should be everybody's little card in everybody's pocket because that's really helpful. Quite often you get asked about what's happening at RCC and of course, the more you're involved, the more you know. We do so much, it's hard to stay involved with everything. The value-added proposal is the one I like the best is that, yeah. We bring a lot to the community and we're, we're very responsive to the community. And the more we have that story out there, the better. We know, or at least we've seen the impact we have. Sometimes it's hard to convey that. In Rotary, they have, they call it the thirty-second elevator speech. And then each one, everybody in the board should be ready to have that conversation. I was asked at the last OCA meeting about it and I shared, well, it's about the mission. What is their mission? The mission is to help students accomplish their goals in addition to fulfilling the needs of the community. That's our mission and that's great. That's an easy mission support. One of the short story I got asked the other day, somebody's asking about the dental hygiene program. They said, well, I think they do teeth cleaning out there and I was funded, funded, go offline and take a look at the social media posting on that, and that was priceless. I loved it. So more of those if you can. So anyway, thanks, guys.
Go ahead, Roger.
Well, I just have a question. Julie, you were talking about, is, when you went through the first part of your presentation about the collaboration between RCC and the industry groups, et cetera. And I know from experience, sometimes those collaborations can be challenging on both sides. I just wanted to know whether there's anything that we can do as board to help strengthen some of those things. Are you pretty comfortable with where they're all going and how they're linking together? Cause there's a lot of opportunity there. And I just wanted to know how you feel about where you are right now and if you can help.
I think there's a lot of people that would have contributions to that particular question because it, it varies across areas. But we've, we have had a lot of our advisory committees in place for a long time and we continue to grow.
That was my first connection. The dinosaurs were still running around when I was advisor for the welding program.
Yeah, and those people, you know, they turn over and refresh. And so we have longstanding members and new members and I could see, you know, if that was something the board was interested in, there's a lot of people in the room, if they were looking for advisory committee members to add to a group that this, that they could consider. I'm looking at all of you asking in the future if a board member might know somebody in a particular industry, if they're, if they didn't have enough representation.
I, I think the, the key is to know that we have advisory committees for all of our CTE programs. So the more nodes that we can, I don't, I'm calling you all nodes. The more nodes we have out and that are reaching out and, and connecting with people, right? If you run into across somebody that is interested in participating, I mean, let, or you have a discussion with them and you say, oh, hey, you know, we have an advisory committee for that. Connect them with us so that we can make sure that their voice is included in that because we, even the, whether they're the big organizations or the small mom and pop shops, we want all of those different voices on the committees because we don't want to just be the umbrella for a single organization. Of course, we do take into account who's, who's hiring all these graduates, right? But it's important to have twenty mom and pops voice, right? Just as much as it is to have a single large organization. And also organizations of different types, nonprofits versus for-profit organizations, associations, all of those folks are great. So like the more people that we can have out in our community working for our, our CC, but not on our payroll, the better opportunity.
Yeah, at, at some point, if you could, if you know that there's a shortage out there of eating people. And the other part of it, I guess, I'm thinking back, and this was back in the early eighties that I was involved. Probably before most of you were born. But I remember I'm thinking, okay, I go to the meetings, you know, once a month or once a quarter or whatever. I'm thinking, okay, now what, what are we accomplishing here? And I was never able to really get my arms around to say, is that really useful? Now, honestly, with the progress that you folks have told us about today, it's pretty obvious that you're listening. You're making better connections than, than we had way back when. If there are some things that I can do to help you, let me know.
Great, thank you.
Just quickly, I like the thirty-second elevator speech thing. That's always very helpful. And then with the stories, I know you have a lot. And I don't know how you keep track of students, you know, year one or two or five out, but I love to tell stories of like I, I have a, my son's friend went here and now he'll be graduating in engineering from George Fox. You know, though, so what they're doing and their jobs after and, oh, you know, she's been working at Robinson Dental or whatever, or hygienist, you know, making, so I had no idea. They make a lot of money. But that, like their success up and above being here, yeah.
We will find that student success stories.
Great information, but nothing else to add.
Well, thank you all for your engagement and your participation. With what I'm hearing from you all, I can say with confidence that we're on the right track. This annual report, I've spoken with Isam about economic impact and getting some of that data into it. I can also work with Kelly and the team about things that we may be able, may be able to provide along the way leading up to that report so that you have different versions or iterations that might support you in telling the story. So thank you.
Thank you. That was really, really good. We are going to adjourn for a couple of minutes to do a little comfort break for anybody who needs to and we'll re start at, let's say, five oh four. Five oh five, we'll see.